He wants to talk to us about a great event happening in Paulding this afternoon.
Yes, sir. We're very proud that we opened up the new fire station up on Mulberry Rock Road. We've been looking forward to having that for quite some time. We're having an open house today. It has been open up and running since March the 31st, but it's this afternoon from 3:30 to 5:30. We're having the open house and dedication for the building, but we're just ecstatic to have it. We've already got it up and running and running call. They were having some great more calls per shift, which we can tell is already helping out, having it there and taking some relief off these surrounding stations.
One of the things in the staff meeting on Monday that I asked you, Phil, please, I said, "When can the people that live in that area expect maybe some relief on the insurance?" So what you were talking about that?
Yes, sir. I filed an application with ISO back when we opened up, and I received a letter from them, confirmation of the station, and they said it would be effective July 1st of this year. But we're going to be sending out postcards in May to all the address points. We've got about 2,300 postcards to send out to citizens and all the address points to let them know that they may be eligible for reduction in their home insurance. And I do understand there are some that are Protection Class 10. Some of those will drop to a 5, and that's probably over half savings in their home insurance. So we're looking forward to that, and I've been getting a lot of calls on them, so I'll probably be receiving less calls after that.
I don't know if the tractor's existing or else what it grew up with was a tractor, but if you take a tractor on that Mulberry Rock Fire Station and draw a five-mile radius, you will probably qualify and contact your insurance agency. Ashley, if you'll come forward, you wanted to add one more point to your accident report.
I do. I failed to tell you guys about the mother with the two children. I was looking at the accident report, speaking with Sergeant Davenport, who's the post commander for the State Patrol here in the county. And Ms. Arkman, and I know I'm not pronouncing her name correctly, but she had the twin five-month-old. She had one in a car carrier, and she had the other in her arms. And as she's walking eastbound this direction, the vehicle's coming toward her, and, you know, the only thing I can explain it, and the chief just said this, was it was just a mother's instinct, but she got those babies, and she threw them over on that planter, and they, there wasn't a scratch on them. I saw them with my own eyes, and those babies were okay. And it's just God's grace that nothing happened to them. And I know, you know, not to get biblical or anything, but it's just sad to see one person die, but, you know, you spared two, two babies. So just applaud that mother for her quick thinking. She was pretty severely injured, but she was able to get those babies over on that planter, and they weren't injured at all, so.
You had people to take care of the babies.
Right, right. There were tons of folks that just flooded the scene and assisted before first responders could get there. Of course, when the first responders arrived, we had to get those folks out so we could portage off the area. But just a true testament to that mother and her desire to keep those babies safe.
Ashley, is she still in the hospital?
I don't know. I know the babies are not, but I'm not sure if she is. I know Mr. Bennett, the gentleman, I actually saw an interview he did. I know he's out of the hospital. I saw him and spoke with him that day. His injuries were not that severe. Her legs were pretty banged up, so I don't know if she's still in the hospital or not.
Was she at Kennesaw or?
She was transported to Kennesaw on the day of the incident. Yes, sir.
If there's a card I know of in this board, you send any of those folks, you'll definitely get them there.
I've got their, I got their information. I can get it to you guys.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Dabey, I think you had one of ladies living in your community that comforted somebody that?
It was a young lady who works in our office and lives at Choswood. And she was coming out here with her tags, heard the commotion, threw her heart apart, and ran over and stayed with the lady that passed away. She just stayed there with her, telling her to help us on the way. And when the first responders got here, then she got up and left.
Thank you. Now, we're at the public participation on agenda items. First, first question is Chris Byram, 747 Old Yorkville Road, Dallas, Georgia, Intergovernmental Freedom Island, number 4.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. We were promised 2,000 jobs plus jobs if they built a general aviation airport. We were promised 2,000 plus jobs when you built Moody Studio. The general aviation airport has failed, costing the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. The Moody Studio has failed, costing taxpayers millions of dollars, and that is now for sale. We have no confidence that a general, I mean, that a commercial aviation airport will do any more than cost the taxpayers millions more and destroy our quality of life in the process. The IGA gives the Paulding County Airport Authority carte blanche authority to raise our taxes even higher, as well as additional fees for litigation. The taxpayers cannot afford to take another chance. Many of us are still struggling through the recession. Please rescind the IGA or move forward with Commissioner Pownell's recommendations for modifications and return control of the airport back to the elected officials. Thank you.
Ron Davis, you know, that's on the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here this morning to speak about the possibility of amending the contract between county and airport authority. I've been trying to do some more reading. I grew myself as I get older and continue to learn, and some of the people that I enjoy reading the most are founding fathers. And I came across a letter last week that Thomas Jefferson wrote in August of 1816, almost 200 years ago. And he, he was talking, someone, a gentleman had written him and had asked about this representative democracy that they were experimenting with in America and how far they were going to take. And Jefferson, in his reply, said that he was gonna, I'm gonna read a couple of quotes from his letter. He said he's gonna take a quote, "So far as to leave no authority existing not responsible to the people." Jefferson knew the danger of having people in authority that weren't, in government that weren't responsible to the citizens. He goes, he goes on to talk about those people. He says that their rights, quote, "Can never be protected against the selfishness of rulers not subject to their control at short periods." So we've got this contract with this airport authority, and there's, there's no accountability. You know, other boards in the county, they can get together and they can make, and they can make a recommendation to this board. And they can say, "We suggest to do this." The zoning board does that, right? They can make that recommendation. But the final authority lies with the gentleman behind this counter. Same should be true for the airport. The airport authority make recommendations, but the final authority, the final responsibility needs to lie behind, with the men behind this desk, every one of you. Each commissioner here should be held responsible by the people that elected them for how they do or how they do not manage that county asset. Thomas Jefferson closed his, his, his letter, and I'll, I'll close my remarks with this. He says, quote, "My most earnest wish is to see the Republican element of popular control pushed to the maximum of its practical, practicable exercise. I shall then believe that our government may be pure and perpetual."
Kirsten, member two, Dallas, Georgia, out number four.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here today to thank Commissioner Pownell for bringing these proposed changes to the IGA before this Board of Commissioners. It's puzzling to me as to how Board of Commissioners can commit to spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money over the next 10 years for a failed operation. Moving from a general aviation airport to a commercial airport will only be more of a burden on the taxpayers of Paulding County. Study after study indicates small airports are struggling as airlines consolidate. The intergovernmental agreement has no benefits to the taxpayers of Paulding County, and I respectfully ask that you pass Commissioner Pownell's amendments to right this wrong. Like the general aviation airport and the Moody Studio, there are no guarantees that this will be successful. The taxpayers cannot afford to end a failed project while we are struggling to feed our families. Thank you.
Paulding County, great again, Lake Huron.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I thank you for this moment a few times. I'm here to talk about the proposed modification to the intergovernmental agreement passed in November of last year, and that its modifications are very necessary. As a taxpayer in Paulding County, I have witnessed failure after failure of projects passed by the previous Board of Commissioners. We should not be required to financially support the decisions on, on the unelected board, such as the Paulding County, Paulding County Airport Authority, or the IGA for the next 10 years. The IGA was passed with a majority vote. While I would prefer the decision to be unanimous, I would hope at least three of you seated here will have, will be willing to protect the citizens of Paulding County and support Commissioner Pownell's amendment. As a stakeholder of the largest asset in Paulding County, the citizens are relying on all of you to make the appropriate decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Kim, this is item number four, 191, Overlook Rock Marquee. She says she's pointed out to y'all many times, it's still in Paulding County. We share, I think, 2018 to 2017 codes, so it could carry a Rock Marquee dress, and Paulding County could carry a Douglas County dress, but they're still on Paulding County numbers.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here again to appeal to the Board of Commissioners to rescind the IGA or move forward with Commissioner, Commissioner Pownell's amendments. I applaud the withdrawal of the DOC's support for the 139 certification, and thank Commissioners Crowe, Pownell, and Colette that this debacle, thank Commissioners Crowe, I'm sorry, this debacle has already caused taxpayers an absurd amount of pain, something the citizens have uttered against as recent as the last election. I've heard some chatter that some should have stayed from voting for this modification, but I will remind everyone, when I asked Commissioner Barnett to abstain from voting on a project for the developer he received a campaign contribution from, we were told by you, Chairman Austin, that a campaign contribution less than $5,000 was not substantial. And to the best of my knowledge, Troutman Sanders attends these meetings and others, but I have not seen their name connected to any litigation. I have with me the copy of the land purchased from the city of Atlanta that clearly states the 162.83 acres purchased from them will not be used for anything but a general aviation airport. Additional lawsuits will probably be filed should the 139 certification be issued, which I seriously doubt. But there should be no question, the city of Atlanta will do what's necessary to ensure the terms of the land purchase are honored just right. Please rescind the IGA and vote for these modifications to be made. The taxpayer for Paulding County cannot afford more legal fees. We have already seen tax increases passed by the DOC in 2012, and cannot carry the additional burden for more legal fees if this continues to move forward. Thank you.
Actually, we have to send agenda item number one, 28, approve the amended agreement for grant funding and agreement for service.
This is just a slight amendment to the agreement that you did regarding this honey land sewer. The only change in it is the forty notice provisions is being changed to reflect Mr. Roundtree as their attorney, and that he needs to get notice. And I wasn't comfortable making that change unless it went back to this board.
If you understand, Chris, that it's a great plan, and this is to help part of the iron that this is far, it's started out by a company, I believe, that won business of the year, last year, or nominated for, and working still off the Septic Tank. So there was a grant available, we got applied for. There's still some things that we need to do. Understand that as of recent, it runs across a piece of property that we may have to go out and acquire easement and all, or warrants, and done. Saying that, any questions y'all have?
This is the same agreement that previously on the agenda that they did approve. The only change to this one is the notice provision, the change of Mr. Roundtree.
Any more discussion? And we move that to regular session, for certain staff and sent agenda. Under old business number one, discuss action on 2015-01-P8A, application by Senator Farrell for the tax and benefit change in Paulding County. Article eight, section H, R2, suburban residential district, as related to redefining our cooking facilities and allowing backyard chickens as permitted use of limitations table from March 24, 2015, or issue we did. I really haven't had any discussion with Paul on this side, but I understand there's an amendment that Commissioner Pownell has. I have talked with our agriculture commissioner, Gary Black, and he says if you're careful and if you're moving forward this, be careful to have all state and either now or in the future abide by all of the regulations. He also stated to me that in Minnesota, they're already at catastrophic level to lose their entire chicken business to the avian influenza flu or put it on as perfectly. And now it's moved down into Missouri. There, there's complications there. So he said, "I would encourage you to table this and really study it in a little more detail before you move forward, because there's a great repercussions." Now, I don't want to deny anyone opportunity to use their land for whatever purposes legally possible. I grew up on those lands with, on chicken farms. But when you start talking about houses that produce chickens, it's stringent what they have to follow. They put on some sort of suit to go in that chicken house, and then it has to be disposed of before they go into a next chicken house that they can cross-contaminate. So the agriculture commissioner has asked me to take this very, very slowly and not do anything that will affect a fine billion-dollar industry in Georgia. So those are my comments. Mr. Pownell?
Well, I believe it was March 24th that I sat here before the Board of Commissioners and I asked them to table this at that time. I committed to the 7:00 PM meeting, and I committed to work on this ordinance and promised to bring something back that we can vote on. And I asked that we bring it back to this meeting so that the folks that were present at the 7:00 PM meeting could actually be present tonight at 7:00 PM meeting without being away from their jobs. So I have, Ms. Farrell actually started this, and it's no problem. And through that, I've had the opportunity to meet Ms. Farrell and a lot of her neighbors. You hear from both sides, people that support it, people that don't support it, and they've got their reasons. Ms. Farrell, I believe, started this application back in October, September of last year. Thank you. And we did not have a planning zoning meeting in November, December, so therefore she was not able to do that. So it was put on the January planning zoning meeting, and it ended up getting tabled. We did not have it scheduled in February, so it went to March. So we've kind of been talking about chickens for a long time. Which, that's what we're supposed to do, is talk about the issues, hear from both sides, and work things out, and see what we can do. So through the process, the news media's come out, and I've had the opportunity to meet with people on both sides. Whether I wanted to meet with them or not, they met with me, and we were there in the streets, and we talked. And so we were trying to work on a ordinance that could allow backyard chickens to some folks. This ordinance will not allow to everybody, but at the same time, that the owner of those chickens would really have to take accountability and responsibility for their chickens if they really want them to take care of that. And that we would also, within reason, protect the neighbors that maybe have issues with the chickens, whether they think it's a smell issue, or too many chickens, or chicken coops with blue tarps on them, or, you know, putting a chicken coop right beside their house and that kind of thing. So we tried to look at it. I'm not going to say it's perfect. Would you like to, if you, if you mind reading what we have here? Would you, would you mind doing that? I will say that I spent a lot of time with Chris Robinson, talked to Planning and Zoning Board, and then Mr. Colette graciously changed his schedule last week and came, and we spent some time together with Mr. Chris Robinson. And we've worked on this issue, and then we sent the ordinance out last week to the other commissioners. So everybody's had it, and like I said, we've talked about chickens since September. This is what we've come up with.
Right. This is under subsections H, and then subsection one, backyard chickens. The keeping of a female pullet or hen of the Gallus, Gallus domesticus roosters prohibited, which may be used for the purpose of providing food or companionship as a pet, considering the following minimum conditions. A, the backyard chicken shall not cause a nuisance as defined by Animal Control ordinance sections 14-10 and 14-11. B, backyard chickens are prohibited from slaughter and/or breeding purposes. C, all backyard chickens must be housed in a coop no larger than 100 square feet in size that is enclosed on all sides, including the top. Parentheses, tarps, classic, or similar covering are prohibited, close parentheses. D, backyard chicken cubes must be the hall and building setback. Setback requirements from front, rear, and side property lines. Front 100 feet from a public right-of-way, private drive or easement and/or property line. Parenthesis, includes properties with multiple roads, streets, and frontages, close parentheses. Side and rear 45 feet from property line. E, coop must be located in the back rear yard and may be, and be a minimum distance of 45 feet from the owner's residential dwelling. F, backyard chickens are not permitted to roam at large or are allowed to be free-range. G, there shall be a maximum of five backyard chickens allowed. Again, that's under age, which is the agricultural facilities such as chicken houses, thus within R2, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I did a little impact study on this, what's track supply. I asked them, "What feed do you sell the most of?" It's about all chicken feed. I think there's 200 and some odd dog fights in the county. No chicken attacks. I'm sort of a common sense governor, I guess you might say. I believe that sometimes we have an overreach in the government to where people have a request to have something in their backyards. I understand what Dave said. He, he talked to Mr. Black, and Mr. Black cautioned him about this. On my porch this weekend, we googled this thing and looked it over. Red birds in my feeders need to be shot, because they might carry this disease. But I think just sometimes we need to apply common sense. I know Ms. Farrell has went to, and her people have went to, a lot of effort to do the right thing. I believe her husband, Dean, served 25 years of military, 23 something, what abouts, would like to have a few chickens made in return. So I think we really need to just use a little common sense here. And I think that Todd and Vernon, yeah, I guess they're trying to bust some in. And I like to also, while I'm speaking, if we need to amend this some way, I'd like to leave the open. Ms. Farrell, I appreciate all the, you know, trying to do the right thing. And I believe we got one email said, "Look, we're willing to pay $20 for a permit. You can keep a close island. And if we violate this, you can come out and find us and tear your chickens away." So I think they're, they're gonna want to try to do the right thing. So that's all I gotta say about this chicken business.
When I, when I look at chicken, this is as you stated, there's two areas to look at, is regulatory and state. And regulatory, there's not enough marshals now to do what we need to do. And in fact, I'm trying to put a budget together, and with the current budget that I have, I'm having to make $6 million because of that to balance the budget. I've never brought before y'all a budget that we did a tax increase since I've been in office. Now, you've raised belly to balance a budget, but we have never given you a tax increase since I've been in office. If we pass this, there, there's chances that we'll be looking at the budget for a tax increase, unless other budgets are made to make this happen. Right now, our staff, Miss Robinson, you mentioned, asked for us to deny this. And, you know, from a budget standpoint, I'm not sure I know how we're going to accomplish this. But without further ado, any other comment?
Y'all want to weigh in? There hasn't been so much good dialogue over a long period of time, but like Christian Pownell said, there were a couple of months where we didn't have a meeting. Spent a lot of time on my grandparents' farm growing up. Love animals. Live on a small farm now with four hens, had cows, had horses, dogs, cats. Love animals. However, there's, I'm gonna vote no tonight, and I got four million reasons. One of them is the budget. Chairman just spoke about that, and I spoke to the head of the Marshals of Majora Home on the extra marshals that it will take, and then complying with the regulations. We're really not sure yet what that will cost. And with the $6 million shortfall right now, and the early planning of the budget, you know, we really don't have all the animal control for staying neutered, so yet, much less to add something else to it. On my emails and correspondence and phone calls that I've received, it's just about split 50/50 for and against. Very important to me that the, that the community development folks, Ann and Chris, recommended denial to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they voted against it. People that we, again, put on a board to serve the county, they voted against it. And I guess finally, just the perception, whether it's reality or not, of the neighbor that lives as close as what's in the diagrams that we have here. If they think it's lowering their property value, then, you know, it concerns me. So for those four reasons, I'm gonna vote against it tonight. I appreciate all the information that I've received. And if, if all the chicken owners were like the Farrell's or my old friends of Bradley sitting two rows back, I don't think I'd have any doubt that all the regulations would be adhered to. But then when their chickens running loose on the road, I just don't admire any of those marshals that go try to catch them.
Okay, I guess we're laying it to you. I'll give no one that's saying.
I'll give no one that's saying anything. And I'll speak on two issues. First is the Planning and Zoning, turning it down. I would have turned it down too. I think what we have now is way too restrictive. I think what we were looking at wasn't restrictive enough. That's why I took time out of my schedule, went to Chris, met with Todd, and put some setbacks in there that I felt comfortable with, and I think that most neighbors would feel comfortable with. As far as the budget issue, I don't see that as an issue at all. We had to sit here and heard from the marshals that right now, they're not enforcing what we have now. So, if we go on and we turn this down, I'm going to push them to enforce it. That means if you have chickens and they're illegal, they're going to be gone. So, that's going to be a cost, we might have to get other people, so this is a non-issue for the budget. If we put it into effect, and it does pass tonight, I don't think we have to hire anybody, because all the chickens we have are going to be legal now. That's all I've got.
I would like to say just a couple of things. Planning and zoning, turn it down, but they turned down Ms. Farrell's application. Because of us talking about chickens since September, this is not Ms. Farrell's application. And in fact, I don't know, anybody in here can raise their hand saying they live on a half-acre lot, or three-quarters, or an acre lot. I don't know if this application here is going to meet your needs or not. But Ms. Farrell's application basically said 0.4 of an acre, six chickens, period. Basically, is that right? We didn't talk about setbacks, we didn't talk about how far from the road, behind the house, the size of the coop, blue tarps, we didn't discuss anything. So, being that the news media has called me out, said, "Hey, we're going to knock on your front door, we're going to knock on your office, or will you just come see me?" And then you're out there, and the people have come to me and sent emails, which is what we're supposed to do, that's our job. I have had the opportunity to hear from both sides, and I'm hoping that this ordinance here, that passes tonight, will allow people to do chickens if they want to, to have chickens. Some of them, I think, will get the, I've been in the chicken business, backyard chicken business, probably four times in the last 20 years. My kids were young, we did it. I've got older, I adopted some kids, and we're doing it again. I've got grandkids now, we're doing it again. I have started and stopped the backyard chicken business four times, all right? And I'll probably stop it again in a few years when the grandkids are old, older, and we're done looking at chickens and eggs. However, I feel like this is an ordinance that will make the owners of the chicken take ownership, and if they want to have chickens in their backyard, they're going to be in their backyard, not next to the fence, which is what complaints we've had from a lot of people. And we set some things in place. As far as the budget's concerned, and again, I appreciate all you guys on this board, but this is where we, this is where we kind of iron things out, this is the only time we can all get together and iron things out, so it's not personal. I know we've got $6 million that we've got to cut in the budget, and I'm willing to help cut, and I can, I can give you some suggestions where we can cut it, and I plan to do that. As far as this is concerned, I think it's going to make, it's going to allow the people to have chickens or want chickens to do it. It's going to put some things into compliance, and the ones that aren't in compliance, and we're going to have a way to say, "Hey, this is it." But we're not out, we're not out right now searching for people to have chickens. We haven't been. The only time this issue has come up is when we get a complaint, and that's why Ms. Farrell came to begin with, and I applaud you for that, for doing what you needed to do and standing on what you believe. So, I appreciate the effort that's been put into it, but the Planning and Zoning Board turned down Ms. Farrell's application, and the other application that was there was really not a completed one that Community Development had done that I felt comfortable with, and that's why we asked to table it and say, "Well, what's it do?" So, we're just, well, not other application, but the other alternative. So, that's where we're at. I appreciate it. Any other discussion? Okay, we want to do business. Adam, we've done one and two before the break. We will look at, I don't know, we'll discuss action for the operation, 2-1, providing for exchange and transfer of Wilkwood Parkway to Pollock County and to the Airport Authority for the right-of-way purposes, authorizing execution of a deed for such purposes.
Thank you. I'm a fellow like me in between chickens and airplanes right now. Hopefully, this won't be difficult for you. Our next trail project is continuing down Wilkwood Parkway from Wellstar Hospital, crossing the Silver Comet Trail, and tying into the current construction we've got going on to build, to widen Wilkwood Parkway further around to Highway 92. In order to construct this trail, we need to exchange some slitters of right-of-way along the Business Park anchored by Interel. That land is owned or controlled by the Industrial Building Authority, and then we own and control the right-of-way adjacent to it. What we're proposing here is to exchange a few small strips of land, the net change is about a tenth of an acre or so. It allows us to build the trail along the frontage, it sort of equalizes the right-of-way. Where there's excess right-of-way, we're giving up a little bit, where we need a little bit, we're asking. Also, there is an easement that's going to be established along the Silver Comet Trail, which is where the Business Park also borders, several thousand feet of the Comet Trail itself. We're going to use that easement to construct a ramp from the new trail down to Silver Comet Trail for easy access. So, this is just an exchange of deeds. I would note that some of your earlier backup, we had some extra legal descriptions in there involving a parcel that does not apply. This is just the parcel involved in the Industrial Park. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Skipper, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I've revised it to, it's only got the two right-of-way parcels, the full descriptions, and so I've revised it to make sure that it's not the amount that it says.
This will add a mile of multi-use trail coming off Silver Comet Trail running north. It is, you know, tying with multi-use paths we're building with the new widen that carries up to Harum High School, and it'll be the second major extension, I guess, after the Seven Hills Connector, the trail we put in. The other ones already been led, it's the connection from here to Carriage on the Park. We're waiting for that construction to start to descend into GDOT issued peremptory, and that will be underway and completed by the summer. This project we're talking about here involving Wilkwood Parkway is a standalone trail project along the portion that was already a four-lane, and it should be under construction by the summer, and will take about a year.
This is our largest tourism in the county, and providing safety and access to it is huge. I think trying to get this trail connected up Harum High School, and then we've also talked about Wellstar and their wellness program, getting that connected, will be some huge efforts, but I think it'll pay off correctly. Any other discussion or questions you want to ask? Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, discuss action on proposed second intergovernmental contract between Pollock County and the Pollock County Airport Authority as proposed by Commissioner Pownell. This was discussed in our last meeting, and then brought forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment and then make a suggestion. I appreciate your allowing us to wait two weeks. I have had a chance to read it many times and take notes on the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, and I think a lot more people have also had a chance to read it, so anything that's said will make more sense. There's positive and negative energy. Negative energy might be said they are dealing with my wife, or having a passing contest with Tom Brady, you know, it's wasted, it's wasted time. Positive energy, on the other hand, is what happened in this room about the airshow, where we realized as a community and as the Board of Commissioners, that the airshow was a good event for high school ROTC, for young kids' education, for adults, and for people who just love airplanes like I do. Negative energy is a waste of time, and it's an exercise in futility. And I think discussing the IGA is at least not going to be value of time, it's going to be non-productive, it's going to be non-unifying, and as far as futility, I'm going to spend another second on that. Here's the unquestionable scenario. We're going to discuss the IGA, which is a legal document between joint political subdivisions of the state by the state constitution and by legislation, which I think maybe some of the citizens who spoke don't realize how a joint government agreement works. We're going to discuss it, we may discuss it for 10 more minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, or an hour, but tonight, vote will be three to two, and the Board of Commissioners will vote to pass Amendment Number Two by Commissioner Pownell. In a week, or whatever the next Airport Authority meeting is, the Airport Authority will bring it up, and they will vote almost unanimously against the amendment, because the amendment does put the Airport Authority under the Board of Commissioners, and I think that's going to be the unquestionable result. Amendment Number Two, bottom line is, it's not going to pass, because you have to have both parts of the intergovernmental agreement in favor of it and pass it by a vote. So, the suggestion, my suggestion would be that since part of the airport delay has been a lack of a fire station that is tied up with the environmental assessment, that we spend our time positively talking about what we can do to get an alternate site, maybe closer down 278, for that fire station and 911 center, and that we take action on that before we lose the splash dollars, and that it be something that we can, that can be positive energy, that can be a win for the county, rather than the inevitable vote for the amendment here and then the vote against it with the Airport Authority.
I think this.
Can I talk?
Yeah.
You sure can. Okay, I want to really disagree with the Commissioner, but I think this is a positive discussion. When I first got elected, I sat down and I met with the attorney of the Airport Authority, I met with the chairman of the Airport Authority, and I met with our then-county manager. All three of them told me to my face that the only reason the IGA passed was to keep it out of the hands of the newborn. I also was told by one of those that it was done to protect Blake Swatter's job. I think this needs to be discussed, I think it needs to be positive, and I think it needs to be aired out. Also, this week, we heard on social media that I should not vote, use my vote because of a contribution I got from Travon Sanders. I took that very serious, I contacted our attorney, and I think before we can go any further on an issue like this, she needs to explain why someone should refuse to vote. I will let mine, see that real quick.
Okay, you did ask me that question. There is a statute about conflict of interest that actually goes with zoning, and that's the most common way to look at all votes, and so usually, when people look at that statute to view in relation to all votes of the Board of Commissioners, it does not say, as has been alleged to, I think, a little bit earlier in this meeting, that you cannot vote on something based upon a contribution from someone that says that you have a conflict of interest if someone has brought, if something is brought before you and you have a business interest, you own a part of the business, you own, I think it's more than 10%, or you have a family member that owns more than 10% in a business that has something brought before you. So, it is, it's not based upon contributions. In a zoning case, they do have to fill out paperwork if they file for zoning that says they have given you a contribution, but it does not say that the member of the board cannot vote on a proposal based upon having a contribution. In this particular case, I did go ahead and look up whether or not Travon Sanders in particular is an issue with relation to this board, and they are not suing the county, they are not opposing the county in litigation at this time, they're not actually opposing the county and/or the Airport Authority for that matter, they're not, they're not signed on any of the Airport Authority cases either. I know we recognize them as a group that has been to these meetings, apparently, but they have not been here, they have not actually signed on to litigation against the county or the Airport Authority at this point.
Well, you know, that's about the vote, but just about the IGA itself, Mr. Colette, I just want our actions to be positive, and if you can, if you can deny that it's unquestionable, that there's no way the amendment can pass because the Airport Authority's, I guess I could be wrong, and it could have a total turnaround, but they voted for the IGA nine zero.
That's not the point. I appreciate what you're saying, that's not the point.
The point is, we begin by, like Connie Frader talked about, she's been traded for 23 years, and Beverly Kestons, and all our meetings are open with let's be unified, and all this does is stir the pot and make it worse.
No, sir, I think what you're doing is stirring the pot. Going back to what Lonnie said, Lonnie said, there's no reason for me not to buckle this or any commission bother. I do not own any of the airports. At this point, the county doesn't own the airport, because they made it very clear through the IGA that it's the Airport Authority who owns it. We sit here and listen today to Ron Davis, and I appreciate what you did, Ron, and it was awesome, all the Thomas Jeffersons said. If you didn't understand what he said, Thomas Jefferson said that an authority that's not held accountable is wrong. We lose our liberty, we lose our liberty by that authority being the way it is, by taking the vote away from this board. Therefore, I know what I'm going to do, and I do think this is possible. Thank you.
That's absolutely healthy. I think that any healthy government disagrees about things, and we talk about that. So, I think the points you have brought up are healthy. Whether I agree with you or not, that's another case, but if we're doing what is healthy for Pollock County and leading it up, this will unify not only us, but the county. The discussions.
Yeah, I think we probably don't have some comments. Go ahead.
What's the purpose of an Airport Authority? There are 15,079 airports in the United States, of which almost half of them are run by airport brands, are run and operated by airport authorities. The 1972 legislation passed by the state of Georgia created Airport Authority, and the membership of Airport Authorities, which is still in effect, is three elected people, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, the mayor of Harum, the mayor of Dallas, then one legislated for commerce, Chamber of Commerce, the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. Commerce, a very good word, commercial, a very good word, means revenue, and it means income for accounting, to pay for school students, for poor people who can't afford athletic equipment for sports games, so those are the four. Then five, the additional members of the Airport Authority, are voted on by, guess who? The Board of Commissioners, are approved by the Board of Commissioners. I realize you may not like some of the past, or you may not like some that are on the board now, but it's still passed by the Board of Commissioners. What's the purpose of an IGA? The Constitution of Georgia allows joint control of an airport, with the county's able to operate it, and the Airport Authority's able to operate it, but with the intergovernmental agreement, both are involved. Both parties have to agree, I think that would make for a stronger support of an asset also. So, the IGA just defines how it's going to be operated jointly, and it was a 3-2 vote in September, it's already been brought up on September 9th by the Board of Commissioners. It was a 9-0 vote on October 14th, voted on by the Airport Authority. So, there's a purpose in these things, and it's legislated by the state constitution So there's a purpose in these things, and it's legislated by the state constitution in all, in all regards. It's not something that Pauling County made up.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Hindsight's always 20/20. When I look back at what's gone on over the past year and a few months, you kind of get some information from some people. I really think there's probably some people on the Airport Authority, if they knew everything, that they would have probably done some things different. What we all do in life, and that's called hindsight, is 20/20. As I look back on hindsight of what's happened with the airport, May 20th last year, after the primary vote, the intergovernmental agreement was brought up in somebody's mind. It was brought up for several reasons. One reason was to take the control away from January 1st board and future boards for 10 years. The other reason was to protect somebody's job. Figure cut and dry.
And you said...
That's what it was. Could have been the job issue first. We were in Savannah a few weeks ago. And I sat down in a class and realized that there was another class offered, and so I felt like I needed to get in that other class, and I got in the intergovernmental agreement class. I was in a law class. And there's one thing that I really learned in that intergovernmental agreement class. I found out later that Dave was in the other class. So what I got in the morning, he got in the afternoon. What he got in the morning, I got in the afternoon. And what was interesting is one of the main things that they kept driving home was an intergovernmental agreement. Any intergovernmental agreement needs to be good for you that's involved in it. And it needs to be good for your citizens. So if there's an intergovernmental agreement between us and the Airport Authority, if there's an intergovernmental agreement between us and the city of Dallas, us and the city of Hyrum, Hyrum. Hyrum. We've got to laugh. Then we, the Board of Commissioners, should be really looking out for our interest. The city of Hyrum should be looking out for theirs and so forth. And I, and that was one thing that they drove home. It's got to be good for what you're doing, and it's got to be good for the people that you represent. The intergovernmental agreement was done to protect a job and to give the authority to the Airport Authority and take it away from the Board of Commissioners for the next 10 years. And I know that people get tired of hearing it would beat it to death, but the thing about it is, it's interesting to me that we talked about chickens in September in planning the zoning, different things, and news media, whatever. We still not voted on chickens, but yet we voted on commercialization of an airport, and we never talked about it. We've talked about, we spent more time about chickens than we did about airports. So what we're doing now is we're having the discussion that we've been having since October 3rd of 2013, because we never had the discussion in the beginning.
Amen.
If we'd had the discussion in the beginning, there would have probably been some hearts and minds that would be different, would be thinking different, and could be worked out some things together that would have been palatable. Would everybody have been 100% happy? No. But it would have been done out in the open, and it wasn't. So therefore, here we are. Nobody, absolutely nobody on this Board of Commissioners, or none of the citizens, should be surprised at where at least three of the Commissioners up here stand. And I say that very carefully, because I mean this. Three of us ran less last year and got elected on what we stood on. So we should... What you should be upset about, those of you for it and those of you against it, is the three of us got up here and didn't do what we said we were going to do. The intergovernmental agreement was designed, I feel like our most important asset in this county is our people. But if you want to look at dollar-wise, our most important asset, if you're in the real estate business, it's a toss-up between this building and this property right here in the airport as far as financially. And we signed over one of our most valuable assets to somebody. It's kind of like a teenager says, Dad, I'm going to move out. I'm moving out next month. And oh yeah, I need $1,500 a month, Dad, so that you pay my rent, my car payment, and everything. Because that's what the intergovernmental agreement did. What I said I would do was I wanted to look at, personally, I'd like to rescind the intergovernmental agreement and be done with it. But what I felt like I needed to do was what can we do halfway in between to work together? What can we do for all of us to work together on the intergovernmental agreement? Let's make it good for all of us to where we can be happy, but yet they can't. They can still have control, but yet if they ask us for money, we have to do it in front of you guys, and we bring it from the general fund, and we do it. We're still working together to make it a success.
Let me ask a question.
It does say in the intergovernmental agreement to be used for general aviation only. And I will tell you this today, that nobody in this room was promised in 2004 that you would have a commercial airport. But everybody in this room in this county was promised there would be no commercial. And it would be general aviation only. And so I said, October 3rd, I stand on two grounds. The way it was done, and the promises that were made. And that's still where I stand today. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to waver on it. I think the intergovernmental agreement making this amendment, we can head some things in the right direction. Some people say, well, you can't do this, can't do that. We have contracts. This board has no contracts. With Propeller. None. We don't have any with them.
Have a contract with the Airport Authority?
It's not this board.
We have, we have an intergovernmental agreement, and it's already been amended once, which says it can be amended again, and I'm asking for an amendment.
Okay, let me ask you something. Normally in contracts, start a contract or you amend a contract, you go to the other party and you ask them, what kind of contract could we have, or what kind of amendment? Maybe some places could be worked out. Have you gone to the Airport Authority and talked with them about this amendment?
I have talked to several people, but actually, Dave, in a contract, if you want to buy a piece of property, you make an offer. They make a counter.
You make a counter.
You make a counter, and you go back and forth, and you work out things together. This is amendment. All I'm asking for is amendment to the contract to do what we need to do.
Did you answer my question? Said you've gone to the Airport Authority and discussed with them Amendment Number Two.
I have not gone to the Airport Authority.
There you go.
In front of the notes, not, there you go. What, what I'm doing, Dave, is I brought this before you. This discussion should have happened two weeks ago. And so here we are today. So I, I would like for this discussion to happen. Us vote on it tonight, and then that goes to the Airport Authority. And when it gets to them, I hope that they have discussion, and if they want to amend or change something, then send it back to us. I mean, that's how you communicate.
Or you can sit down and talk too. You know, I would rather sit down with my wife and talk to her and send her something.
And I agree with you 100%, but the Airport Authority is very stringent when it comes to what you can talk about in their meetings. I mean, they just, it's, it's got to be on their agenda, and I don't want to get into that, but that's their rules. And to be able to go in here and sit and talk about that, I would have loved to sit down and talk in 2012.
How many times have you been in Calvin Thompson's office in that discussion with him?
Twice.
But you haven't about to amend it, but you've been in his office. So you, you know you can go talk with him.
I understand that Calvin Thompson's one member of the Airport Authority.
But he would be glad to have any of those members in there to request. Here's a, here's one other, one other question I have on contracts. Just on contracts. Do you deal in contracts in your business? Briefly. An expectation in a contract is fairness. It's fairness. If you're going to model your kitchen, you want, you want the person, the company to do A, B, C, D, and you're going to give them a certain amount of money. If you're going to buy a car, you want to see the sales contract and what it includes. It's fairness. The way I read, and thank you, get to allow me to read it. The, the, it's a, it's not a fair amendment. It's 100% Board of Commissioners and 0% Airport Authority. So what's fair about that?
What's fair about it now? Your vote was intended to keep out this board's hands. Do you think that was fair?
That's a whole other issue. I, I didn't vote for it because of that. I voted for it because I thought it was good for the county. It, it puts in a 10-year agreement a more business-oriented requirement. It fixes the budget, and we'll finish about the budget. Because the yearly budget for 10 years is less than what it has been in the past when the airport department came under, the employees were county employees, et cetera. And it's ratcheted down $25,000 per year. Again, the wean of the Airport Authority off of getting the county money. So I think from a financial standpoint, you can see advantages in having that fixed. And then we're getting out from under a government bureaucracy. And again, almost 50% of the airports in the country are run by Airport Authorities.
The only way I see now that the IGA stands is, give us the money and keep your mouth shut. That's the way I see the IGA. Do I have input into the, how they're going to grow the airport and what they're going to do with it?
Yeah.
I do not.
That's right. Who, who, when, when term limits are over, who's going to nominate who's on Airport Authority? The Airport Authority is composed of people that were voted by the Board of Commissioners. Not necessarily these five board members.
I agree with that. Now I actually upheld the promise to keep those promises. They, now I changed the vote. I hit the vote in my heart, because I wanted to honor those promises. I wish some of the other people on that board and some of the commissioners would also honor some promises were made by other people too.
I think it'd be a lot more constructive to talk about getting the fire station out from post two.
I agree. And to be honest, we've talked about putting the fire station out there, and that's one of the things that I'm going to add to real estate to close session when we go into close sessions today. And we've talked about, we've been talking and working on the 911 center. And those are things that we can move forward with and do something different, and do what's right for our citizens and our community. Fact of the matter is, the 10-year plan to finance the airport, that what we're supposed to give them, if you really break it down, is no different than what we've averaged out giving them for the past six years. It's, it's within about $10,000 a year. It is weaning them off $25,000 a year, Dave, but at the end of the 10-year contract, the contract is done. It's just a 10-year contract. And so it comes out for $25,000. It starts off at 4, goes to 375, 350, 3 and 1/4. But if you average it out, it's the same amount of money we've been giving them the last six years. So it's, it's, it's not any different. And but I'm, I'm thankful we're having a discussion.
When, when is, with the Part 130, uh, it, it, it was come with the advantage of the FAA recognizes again, instead of having $100,000 a year, the FAA would work this airport a million dollars.
Thank you for a minute.
And, you know, when we, when we look at this, and y'all say out in the open, everything was in the open. There's two people, excuse me, I assume you leave. There were two people that attended our meetings. Dr. Covington, who's sitting in the middle of the room, and Ed Tittis. Two people in this whole room that came to every one of our meetings, everyone. And nothing was ever voted on or done outside of those meetings. You've got prospective businessmen that are world leaders and stuff. No, nobody plans to do anything. I'm seven generations here in Big Calliope, Redneck, and then all the way up, you know, part of, part of the problem. But what I look at is my family has carried the burden of this county for property tax for hundreds of years. And now that we have a chance to have some decent and great jobs, and you say, well, why haven't you done it? Well, you look and, and you say, well, if somebody's working against you every single day, and millions of dollars coming in from Atlanta to try to inhibit it from being successful, those have an effect. So you can't say, well, you didn't do this because of that, when hundreds of millions of dollars were spent against you. So, and, and every way, form, and fashion, there's some sort of litigation, but there are two people in this room that went to every meeting. And if you want to know what happened, just ask them. They were there. And nobody else even bothered to come. So all those things were discussed out in the open. So when we say out in the open, it was in there. It's just nobody cared until, again, it's in your backyard, and some people show up.
I think another huge factor, and a couple of constituents have asked me to say something about the sense we have gotten into the discussion against my presiders. The Airport Authority, while I was on it, voted in the open to go into an agreement with Propeller Air Force. I was trying to think, was voting for it. I'm very interested in the economic impact that we could gain as a county, because I see all the areas with schoolchildren, and my wife works over in the Housing Authority, and the other needs on highways that we need to to meet with the coming increased population that we're going to have. Scott's got a list, you know, pretty long, about what we need to be doing. We went into an agreement with them, a contract with them. Me and y'all read the contract. What happens when you break a contract? And who is liable? If, if that contract is broken, you know, depending on what happens from a litigation standpoint, the county's going to be sued. I don't really think that taxpayers on either side of the room want to spend, you know, any money, any of their tax money hanging off who that contract's with because of the litigation. So that's a huge issue. It's just the fact that that both the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners will be liable in a lawsuit.
Why, we can, why, we have no contract.
I, I think this skipper would probably be able to answer that to us. I'm not a lawyer, you're fine.
I don't, I don't want to give you legal advice, but we're not in proximity of contract right now.
We, this Board of Commissioners, does not have a contract.
We don't have a contract.
We don't have a contract. And if you really look over the contract...
I wasn't here when this was signed, but...
No, you weren't.
Okay. And... All's back to the county.
And if you really look over the contract, you want to talk about the million dollars, take, take, go out there and take a look at the contract and talk about the million dollars from the FAA, and tell me if you think the citizens are going to see any of it. Then, if you want to look at the October, November 2012 discussion online on the video where they approved, you can see how much was discussed in the open. So I'm looking at, I don't, I don't want the intergovernmental agreement period. I think it was wrong. But I'm looking at what can we do between what we have and where we are today. What can we do that both sides can work to be, work together? And that's, that's why I've worked on what I've worked on and come up with what, with what we've come up with for us to vote on tonight.
Commissioner Carmichael, will you correct me? This might understand even when the Propeller entered this agreement with us, and no one ever saw their finances. It's never brought up. Let's get their, look at their finances, find out how successful they are, where else they've done anything successful. And also...
Yeah, that's true. Was, and actually Blake Swatter made it, did, did renew that, yes.
I've heard options, so I don't talk like about that. And also, I keep hearing about jobs, and all the jobs will be created. Has a feasibility study ever been done? And maybe that's something this board ought to do, to find out. If it could create a job, I'm not convinced it could create a job.
Well, you know, under the climate today, if I were an aerospace company and put it here, it'd be like, I'm going to come in the middle of all that by cloud, and, and, and I think y'all know that. But look at that cloud, and you know, somebody said something derogatory about the film studio. We got the film studio successful in 2015. It is in the black. We have somebody looking at it, and we always had us that was a film studio. It, it was, you look all over Georgia, everything you hear is about how a period finds this, how a period finds that. We have somebody, and they're well-known in the industry to look to buy the film studio. So if, if we set an environment for people to be successful, they're going to be successful. And that's all we're trying to look at with the commercialization of the airport. And, you know, again... And, you know, again, two weeks from now, we have the airshow coming up, we'll see a lot of people enjoying aerospace and aviation. I guess the day is getting long and tough. I'd like to end discussion on this and call the conclusion of our regular business session. I would like to recognize a few folks in the audience. David Apple is here with Georgia Tech Innovation Institute, I believe, and thank you for being here, David. We have John Dean, I failed to mention John earlier, a part of our water team with Arcadas. Jeff Stevens is here. Jeff is rebuilding the Georgian concourse and getting ready to make huge developments down there, a possible hotel. We have Chip Lake, a well-known political consultant, known throughout the entire southeast. So a lot of celebrities in our events today, and before we go into... Yeah, before we go into executive session, and you said, besides pending litigation, you would like to add, real estate?
Wanted to just add, real estate, in case the opportunity came up, I wanted the public to know that I've got some real estate that I'd like to discuss.
Okay. But we do have public participation on non-agenda items. We have Nancy Hollins here coming up with us for National Day of Prayer.
Thank you for letting me talk to you. National Day of Prayer is May the 7th, Thursday, May the 7th, and Paulding County Faith and Freedom Coalition has joined with several pastors and churches in Paulding County, and we will be doing Paulding County's National Day of Prayer at the new amphitheater. We will start at 12 o'clock, and we will end at 7 o'clock. It'll be an all-afternoon thing. We will be doing, have a different pastor who will be praying at every hour. We have taken up several items, we know, we'll be praying over all of our elected officials, our government, all of our governments, from federal, state, local governments, city governments, we're gonna pray for them. So we're gonna pray for our families, as the moral compass in this country has changed. We're gonna pray for our churches as they're under attack. We're gonna pray for public safety, as we know, that is something that's really been under attack lately. Our first speaker, our first pastor that will be speaking, is the pastor of the Paulding Administrative Association, Pastor Johnny McBurroughs of Shabbat Missionary Baptist Church. We'll kick it off, and we will pray for all of our elected officials. I have contacted Congressman Graves, he is very interested in coming. If he can work it into his schedule, he'll be here, he's gonna be in the district that whole day, so he's gonna try to be down there sometime. But as Pastor Burrows says, "When I look at the current state of our nation and our world, believers must look at Chronicles, Second Chronicles 7:14. If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and will heal their land." As you all know, we need a lot of healing, not just in our country, but also in our county. So I think we have a great day, we're excited about it. I hope everyone will participate, I'll try to get some more information to everybody. This is, we have a press release that will come out in the neighborhood and New Era for Wednesdays and Thursdays thing, and, but it should be a great, a great event, so I hope everybody will be...
We'll try to get on that on our website and on our channel, so.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Nancy, do you have all the preachers you need now, and I have fallen short in helping you?
I have one, one space left, and I got to talk to Mr. Powell about that, because I think he had talked to one of his pastors about that. But thank you so much, I did one of your guys that you talked to.
Good. Now we have Mr. Tom Blanton, talking about the airport asset to Paulding, past, present, and future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Commissioners. Although, when I, I feel like I'm high, yeah. I've been here several times this year, and I must say you have very invigorating discussions, and I commend you for your service. If you have not served in public life before, which I have, it is a thankless job, you cannot win for losing, usually. But like Thomas Jefferson was alluded to earlier, and by Vernon Collette, powerful government we have. And I always liked this quote from Tipple Mill, who's former Speaker of the House of Representatives in Washington. "All politics is local." We have seen the best example of politics in action right here today, local. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm holding a watch, but since I'm speaking from a broad point of view, I'm not speaking for anything in particular, except for Paulding County as a place that is worthy of balance and quality of life. And you cannot have that without a viable governmental entity, and that's what you've been witnessing here today. Now, what I wanna do is get to about the 30,000-foot level in reference to where we are as a county. First of all, I'm a Newcomer, I've been here only nine years. But when I got here into No-Soul, and I wanted this county to put me to work, Chairman of County Commission to put me to work. I've been on planning zone board, I've been on library board, I've been really active in my church, I've had a great life here, I've been very active in other groups. And so what I'm trying to share with you, if you elevate this discussion, and the way we are ending this discussion this afternoon, and before you take up the really hardcore stuff later today, it's really important to kinda look at ourselves from a slightly different perspective. And here's the way I'm gonna start this, and I'm moving as fast as I can, Mr. Chairman. I was 20 years old in 1960. My first vote for President of the United States was a young man who was 43 years old, John F. Kennedy. And his statement was, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." Every person in this room today, regardless of your affiliation, regardless of your opinion, you're trying to do something for your country, you're trying to do something for your county. So I commend you for this kind of vigorous discussion. Now, I have this other quote, this gets back to Washington, D.C. The library congress has an engraving on the tabiture right at the top. The past is prologue, that's a fancy way of saying it, according to my heritage here in Georgia. You ain't seen nothing yet. This county has a bright future, regardless of who sits behind those desks up there. It has a bright future, it's preparing itself for the future, and I wanna be a part of this future, just like in the last nine years I've been part of this past. So I'm privileged to be here. Now, I'm a timeline person. I can't function unless I see past, present, and future on a line. We've already talked about the past, the past is the prologue. The present, let's just jump ahead for a slight moment. The past is history, the future is somewhat a mystery, the present is a gift. What are we doing with our time today? We gifted only today. We never know if we're gonna be here tomorrow. So my job, I think, and no one asked me to do this, and I certainly didn't ask to be placed last, because that's a big responsibility. But what I'm trying to say to you is, there's some very good rhetorical questions we should ask ourselves as we're leaving here. Number one, what are you going to do with the gift of today? And I say you, opponent, you, 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 me, all of us. What direction are you taking today? If you don't know where you're going, any direction's gonna get you there. This county knows where it's going, it's gonna struggle issues, but you're gonna overcome these challenges, and you're gonna capitalize on the opportunities. So I'm cheering for Paulding County today. How does our airport's history, its timeline, and its future, which is part of the mystery for Bennett County? From a past point of view, we already know, and we've already mentioned several specific things in terms of creation of jobs. The present, use of private planes, airshow in May, even the current debate about the airport's future is a viable part of what we're trying to do. And having said that, I think I should conclude scripturally. Now, this meeting started scripturally, it based on scripture with regard to the National Day of Prayer, and so here's my quote, straight from the mouth. And hey, that one is five minutes ago, so...
I'm sorry. I stated it.
Psalm 31, chapter 3, verse, "For you are my rock and my fortress, therefore, for your name say, thee that guide me." May each of you be led by that great master creator, up in the sky. Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. I need a motion in the second to adjourn and go into executive session for pending litigation and real estate.
I'd like to make a motion and we go into executive session for pending litigation and for real estate.
Motion second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Your biggest fans.
Stay.
Stay.
Ten men.
I know you.
I'm sorry, Sunday.
You're here 25 minutes early.
Yeah.
We just got time to go to the hot dog, come back.
We had eight children, we had five, you know, y'all had to cook something.
No action was taken in closed session, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
We waited for that? Come on, come on, we waited a little...